Good morning, I declare the meeting open and invite everyone to stand to say the opening karakia. Kia ora, welcome everyone to today's Regulatory Processes Committee meeting. Please note that the meeting is being livestreamed, please let me or Democracy Services know, or Shaun that is, if you intend to leave the meeting, and if we're still going at 10:30 there will be morning tea there at that point. This is the first meeting of our committee under the new structure with a Tareo name and all, and there we are. So we are the brain which looks at processes, works out how to achieve the tasks at hand, and looks to improve efficiency. So we need to take that on board, I'm sure we do anyway, a lot to live up to. Right, apologies. Yes, we have, the mayor is here, I believe the deputy mayor will be, apologies from the mayor and deputy mayor for early departure, and from councillor O'Neill who texted me to say she's a few minutes late. Seconda please. Councillor Conde, thank you, please vote. All right, sorry? Yeah, right, okay, all good. So that's carried unanimously, thank you. Just putting phones on silent, good. I call our members to declare any conflicts of interest that they may have in relation to any item on the agenda. There being none, we shall move on to confirmation of the minutes. I move that the Regulatory Processes Committee approve the minutes of the meeting held on the 18th of May, having been circulated, they be taken as read and confirmed as an accurate record of that meeting. Have a seconda please. Okay, thank you. Councillor Matthews, there were some slight changes which have already been made, well just in terms of like AM instead of just EM, so nothing even worth mentioning, so those in favour, well you know the drill, please vote. And my hand is up again. Did that go through? It showed one on here. All right, okay. There are no items not on the agenda, we have no public participants, but we do have a statement which is, a written statement which has been handed out to everyone from Jane Martin on the traffic resolution, 7821 Norway Street, Aro Valley, and she is supportive of that. Don't need to read it out, do we? So that has been tabled. Moving on to general business, the proposed road closure. The Shalley Bay Seal Sprint event on Sunday the 3rd of October, I'd like to invite Maria and Shaun to the table. I have one question on this, and if anyone else has one, you have a question councillor Matthews, I'll let you go first.
My question may, it may not be that you're the right people to answer this, but I understand this is a motorsport event, and under the climate change impact and considerations it has not applicable, so I'm just interested in, does any other part of the organisation actually look at the climate change? Because the climate change implications may not be to do with the road closure, but there might be some to do with the event, so yeah, wondering if that is a thing that happens.
Question, other than that we have, not particularly this event, the Alexander Motor Race, people have put in objections for next year about the use of petrol and carbon emissions, which we will be tableting at that road, proposed road closure.
So we've received no objections from any other area within council, but we will make sure that we do circulate it with them going forward as well.
Thank you councillor Matthews, it's probably a very useful question to ask, probably not the brief as such of this committee directly, but something that could well be looked into further, under our, under the applications of the council as a whole. My question Maria or Shaun is, in terms of this event, have there ever been, we've heard that there have been no objections this year, have there been any previous issues with the event in any shape or form?
Only from a resident there who was in ICU, that every time this is on, I need to identify to that person, so they can do their schedule accordingly for the road closure, so they can get to the hospital.
Thank you, and I believe you wanted to make a comment, or I'll ask the question, would you like to tell us more about the penguins?
Well, because of the penguin nesting boxes in the area, we are obliged anyway to make sure that the Penguin Friendly Society and anyone in the dock are across the submit, and any feedback that they give back to us, we have to take, the event organise, organise it as to take into consideration for their event, which they have done, hence the timeframe to make sure that the penguins are not coming in and out at a time that the race is on, and it's all checked beforehand, yes.
Yep, so there's mentioned somewhere about the dawn and dusk timing in regard to the penguins, so there is no conflict?
No, and that was on the recommendation, recommendation from dock and the Penguin Friendly Society, to make sure that is taken into account.
Okay, thank you, there being no further questions. Oh councillor O'Neill.
Cool, yeah, thank you. My question was kind of around penguins, but if we, if an event was to be notified for racing during dawn and dusk, is there anything as a council we can do to, apart from agreeing to or not to have a road closure? Is there anything that council can do to ensure places for penguins and other things are protected, or, like is there anything council could do if penguins were at risk, outside of the road proposal?
If they were at risk, we would recommend the event to be changed or not be held at that time. You know, we have to take all those considerations, in fact when we actually, before I actually put these papers into consideration and have the conversation with all these people, yeah.
That would be the simplest course of action, now we've developed quite a good relationship with, I suppose the penguin specialists, with all of the work that's been happening further around Evans Bay etcetera, so we've come to understand the, through the ecological requirements quite, quite a bit.
And sorry, just one more follow-up question, I know that the street activity team either consults with the traffic team or a council events team, or they either consult with PSR team, depending where events are. What does that kind of process look like to ensure the conversations kept up going? Like what, like what would happen once you receive a request for a road closure coming in like this, to check with other parts of the organisation?
Well, other than social media, the DomPoste, for it to get to here, to make, my job is to ensure it gets approved with all those factors taken into account, so I can't not, we have records of these people being notified, they come back to us with the information, and I hold all that information actually in the road for questions like this.
Yep, cool, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, the report itself, we, this, this is an annual event, permission is sought by the organisers every year, there have been no previous issues as such, other than the one that was mentioned, and the aspect of the penguin safety has been, is being monitored, so on that basis, I move the motion, being the recommendation in the office's report, can I have a seconda for this please? Councillor Wolf, would you like to speak at this point? Do we have any debate? Councillor Matthews.
Yeah, just in relation to my question, and I think probably somewhat related to the, to the issues that councillor O'Neill might raise around the penguins, that I do think that we need to make sure that when we're making these decisions on the road closures, we are actually considering the, the carbon effect of some of these motorsport events, and that it would be good in future to maybe have some advice from the sustainability team, and you know, as part of this process, if it's the only place it's going to be considered, that obviously, we, you know, and we might be wanting to have conversations with organisers of these events about what steps they're taking, so, yeah, thank you.
Because of the carbon emissions, that is definitely going to have to be something that we have those strong conversations about, just because people are really across all that now in the public, and they want to know what council are doing, going ahead in their forward planning, and how it ties in, so it's coming.
Perhaps we could discuss this informally after the meeting anyway, over morning tea. Councillor O'Neill.
Yep, thank you, thank you, just briefly wanted to comment that the last time that this traffic resolution came to the Regulatory Committee, I think perhaps last year, we met up and we had a bit of a, bit more of a chat about the penguins and things like that, and I went out with the local ranger, just to check on the penguin boxes, and I explained the different mechanisms that we have, whether we go through events or PSR, and I am reassured by this report that because events not being held in the dawn and dusk area, the penguins are much lower risk, so yeah, just to note, and if Malcolm, you hadn't asked, asked that question, then I would be speaking about it now, but, yeah, just in the past I have had a couple of residents just sort of flag with, with me as something that they were worried about in their community, but kind of not really understanding that impact, but yeah, again, and keen to see, yeah, on the, on an impact report, we currently at the moment, that we have a really strong response of the traffic management and impact, but yet no, no impact to ecological diversity and stuff like that listed at the moment, but yeah, cool, yeah, happy with that.
Deputy Mayor Frey.
Yeah, look, I actually agree that with an area as sensitive as this, because it is, you know, it is one of our areas that does have quite untouched ecological values, and I'm kind of a little bit surprised it's allowed to go to six o'clock, given it'll be dark then and the penguins do cross roads, so you know, they cross roads at dusk, but look, I think the point's been well made, that in future it'd be really good maybe just to have a paragraph that provides some assurance to the committee as to how some of these environmental and ecological factors have been considered, given this particular, you know, in, in any area that's got obvious ecological and environmental values.
Councillor Frey, we will be into daylight saving at that point, so.
Okay, look, I'll take it all back, because I realise you're right, okay, and that's an important point, because I'm thinking this is happening earlier than it obviously is, thank you.
It may well be, if, I mean, I'm no expert on penguin welfare, but it may well be that there's, if there was any risk, that there could be a human, well, not necessarily barricade, but people there to ensure that the penguins were not wanting to cross the road at that point, if, if there was any risk, yeah, but it's certainly worth looking into if necessary. All right, no more debate, on that basis I put the motion which has been moved and seconded, please vote accordingly. Carried unanimously, thank you. Two lots of traffic resolutions, the implementation of the annual plan, long-term plan committee decisions, so, do we have any, look, I would like to invite officers to the table, there are going to be questions either on this or on the next item on the agenda, so Armin Shahin and Zach Moody, do we have, that's from the, our traffic team, welcome to the table.
Kevin, do you want to pop up as well?
Thanks mate.
So do we have any questions for officers at this point on item 22, the? Councillor Matthews.
I'm just thinking back to the oral submission that we had from the gentleman who lived in Hill Street, and just, you know, that I was obviously concerned about the impact for them as residents there, and just wanting some advice on, on that, or response to that.
We have prepared a response, and it did go home last week, sorry I haven't got it with me, but I can certainly come back to you and give you that response.
Okay, any other questions, you, you're introducing this report, councillor Conde.
I guess my one question is just around the Calbin campus, like, I understand that essentially we voted on this when we voted on the long-term plan, that we agreed to these changes, but given the wide number of other things that we're voting on at that meeting, this one probably didn't get as much attention, so I was just wondering if we could talk a bit about the, the changes to Calbin campus, there have been some concerns, I think, from students who are worried about, this parking is currently free, and worried about having to pay, but also a submission from Victoria University, that they have concerns about occupancy and turnover, could you just respond to some of the concerns that we've had in that area?
Some of the concerns have been, either come from students of Victoria University or, or other residents that are around and about that area. I guess the point to make is that there will still be some unrestricted parking available in the Calbin area, it's not, it's not that this is the only unrestricted parking that's going to become restricted, the intention is, is that we, we don't believe that people necessarily are going to use that space for, for commuter parking, for example, it would still be more expensive to park there for the day than it would to come into the city and park, either in a parking building or, or on coupon parking, depending if you've got an early bed rate, so we're not intended, we don't believe, there are some people who are concerned that that will happen, we are, we are less concerned about that at the moment, we would want to, we are happy to monitor the, the implementation of that particular initiative once it gets underway, and would certainly be open to checking to see how it was going over time.
I'll hand over to you councillor Conde, I'm trying to introduce the report, and I do have something to say when it comes to debate, but.
All right. Kia ora everyone, so this is basically the traffic resolutions that are putting in place the changes we agreed to as part of the long-term plan deliberations, as I said, when we were deliberating, I think we, we spent a lot of time focused on some of the changes to the, we can, you know, we can metered parking rates, the coupon parking rates, the couple of changes that are here that, that probably didn't get as much debate at that meeting were around the Calbin campus at Hill Street, where we do know there have been some concerns as well. I'd like to thank officers for the response and for getting back to the resident in particular on Hill Street who came in to, to respond to us, I think it's, you know, it's clear that there, there might be a couple of residents in that area who, who might be affected, and again, we were having calls for more residence parking areas and residence parking zones, which is something we're continually hearing, so as always, we're looking forward to the, the parking policy implementation and seeing how we can start rolling those things out, but I think for now the change that we're proposing, you know, seems to make a lot of sense. I acknowledge the concern around Calbin campus, particularly people who are concerned about occupancy and turnover, people who are concerned that people might come and park, you know, for the full 10 hours and essentially use it as commuter parking, or people concerned that they may not be able to pop in and get a park there for the, for the time that, that would get them a couple of lectures and then pop out again, so, you know, that, those concerns about occupancy and turnover are concerns that we share in terms of, that's an important issue under the parking policy, that we're delivering good turnover and that we're delivering availability in this area, and thanks Kevin for saying that, you know, we're going to keep an eye on that. As we switch to metered parking in this area, we'll have sensors embedded in these parking spaces, we're going to have really good data going forward about how the turnover and occupancy are going, and if it turns out we are seeing behaviour we're not expecting, if we are having issues with, you know, limited occupancy and turnover, then we can look at changing the, the restrictions in this area further down the track. Now I do have a couple of changes to the original recommendations, just to let you know HI and J, we've just taken out, there was an error that just, that said convert P120 metered parking, but this is in fact not currently metered parking, it's P120 free parking, so we've just deleted the metered out of there, and then I've just added this final recommendation that just acknowledges what Kevin was talking about, that we will monitor the occupancy and turnover of these parking spaces around Calbin campus, and that Kevin will report back to the committee within six months after the changes are implemented, so we can just see how it's going, because I think it is really important that we had a submission from Victoria University of Wellington to Hiraunga Waka, they're an important partner for us in the city, and if they have concerns about occupancy and turnover, I think we all want to take those concerns seriously, so thanks Kevin for addressing that, and obviously if we see any significant issues before six months, I'm sure we'll be hearing from you, but as I said, having, having the meters in place, which means we will have the sensors in place, actually means we're going to have much better data in this area than we've had previously, and thanks to acknowledge that there will still be some free parking in this area, as well as some other unrestricted parking and coupon parking in the area, and just finally to note essentially that we have essentially made these changes in terms of our long-term plan budget, they are built into our rates increases at this time, so just emphasising to you the challenges that would arise from us not approving these changes at this meeting today, thank you. Can I have a seconda please?
Okay, the opportunity for debate, I'd just like to make one comment, that I did not vote in favour of all of these at council, but bearing in mind what councillor Conde has just said about this not going through this committee, I think it is, and council having voted in favour of these, I think it is taking a pragmatic stance, it makes sense to, for me to vote for these at this point, and I don't wish to proceed on the basis of taking them item by item, so others may vote in the way that they feel they need to vote, but that is my stance on this, any other debate? No, okay, on that basis.
Thanks councillors.
I put the motion which has been moved and seconded, please vote accordingly. Okay, thank you, that is carried, and item, do we need Kevin at the table still? For Moana will, yeah, Moana would like to come to the table, item 23, traffic resolutions, there's a, there are 10 of them I think, from memory. So any questions? So any questions at this point? I do have one, and that is on the first one, Kate Shepherd plays Thordon. The officer's response at one point is that we will pass feedback to the, feedback to the police. There's a woman who submitted, who was it, Paula Warren? And I think she's asking for, she's making some suggestion and we've said that we will pass a feedback to the police. Do we know whether, sometimes when we make a response like that, and councillors operate on the same way and it doesn't always get followed through unnecessarily, do we know whether this has actually been passed back to the police? And if you're not sure what I'm talking about, it is on page 89 of the agenda.
Sorry, I've just come back from leave, so I'll have to chase that up actually and see if it's actually been sent through. But I'll follow that up and get back to you.
Yeah.
See if it's been sent to the police.
Okay, just we have assured the submitter that the feedback will be passed to the police and I just wanted to ask whether that in fact has been done.
Yep.
I'm assuming we will follow back, but it doesn't always pay to assume necessarily. I'll leave that in your hands, thank you.
Thanks for that.
Any other questions?
Moana, can you tell us a bit more about the Courtney Place slip lane? I have to admit, I was expecting more public participation today from retailers in the area. So could you give us an update on how those conversations have been going?
Sure, I know Sam is actually online who ran the project, so she might be a better place to do the update. Sam, are you there?
Kia ora, Sam, I didn't realise you were with us on Zoom.
Kia ora, I'm behind you all. Hello. I actually, I understand that Chris from First Retail was supposed to join us today. I'm not sure if he's at the back of the room, I'm not sure if he's here. There was a, no, okay. We had one member of the public try to submit to come and talk today, but unfortunately I've just heard that they wanted to come in and applied to be here today at 1pm yesterday, so missed the cutoff. And from what I understand, the last communication that went out last week, which was the summary report of the amendments that we were proposing to add to this traffic resolution and then taking in consideration for a further traffic resolution, have been positive. So, yeah, I'm comfortable that the amendments that we are looking at today are what the retailers are in support of.
So probably the only thing to add is there'll be another round of traffic resolutions to implement the P15, P30 changes at all times. But the changes around shifting from 6pm to 10pm are able to be made under today's traffic resolution.
Correct.
Thank you. Any more questions for officers? Otherwise, I'll hand over to you councillor Conde.
Kia ora, all right. First, I'd just like to thank everybody who was involved with the slip lane trial on Courtney Place. I think it's a really important city safety initiative and it was great to see it happen so quickly. It's really an important issue that we're trying to get on top of and do everything that we can in that area. So it was great to see it go ahead. I know that it was a bit bumpy and I appreciate everybody who had to, you know, work through that and spend time working through that with our retailers and other people in that area. It's always a challenge, we appreciate you. And it's great to see that actually the retailers are really happy with the proposals that you've brought back to us. So it really says that we've listened to the feedback that we've had from them, which is great to see. We really look forward to seeing the next traffic resolution. So councillors, we will have another traffic resolution coming back that will look at implementing some changes that were requested by the retailers in this area that went beyond the original proposal. So as you know, if we go beyond the original proposal, we need another traffic resolution. So that process is in train, Sam and others are taking that forward. So that's really great to see that we're being so responsive to the feedback that we've had from retailers in this area. And it's really a great initiative. It certainly makes me feel a lot better not worrying about people standing in a bus lane or in a bus stop trying to get into a taxi when they might have had a few already. It just is obviously a safety hazard. So it's great to see us looking at this kind of solution really creatively. Also, just wanted to note and thank officers, there's lots of broken yellow lines on our agenda today, which is always, which is great because it's again a really important safety issue to make sure that our emergency vehicles can get through and there's good access. And I just wanted to note too, in particular, Norway Street and Edinburgh Terrace. On Norway Street, where it was possible, we had some feedback from residents concerned about parking loss. And where it was possible, our staff have gone back and actually said that we can restore one parking space there, more than we had thought, which is great. And in fact, the woman who tabled her public participation was coming in support of the Norway Street traffic resolution because they are concerned about the safety of access through there, which is really great. But I also wanted to note that there was another change in front of us in Edinburgh Terrace and Berampor that had some residents concerned. But in that case, our staff have said, no, there really isn't space there for us to keep a parking space. For safety reasons, we really do have to keep these broken yellow lines. So I think, I find that really encouraging that when I see that, what it says to me is that you guys are really making every effort where we can to accommodate residents' needs around parking spaces, but that you aren't going to compromise safety where it's really not possible. So I really appreciate that, it's great to see. And, you know, we all acknowledge that there's a lot of time and effort goes in behind all of each and every one of these traffic resolutions. That's all I wanted to say today. Can I have a second to please?
Debate at this point? Okay, I would like just to make a comment, and this is, it's a comment rather than a criticism, in that we have nine traffic resolutions here and I see that there are three people who have commented on, well, not actually commented, that actually indicated support for every one of them. They, and in many instances, they haven't actually commented. I guess these people, people are entitled as much as anyone else to indicate whether they're supportive or otherwise. But my question is whether, they don't have as much skin in the game, if you like, as those who are immediately affected, those who live in the area or work in the area. And in three instances, they are the only ones who have made any, or again, not a comment, but they are the only ones who have indicated either support or opposition to a particular proposal. So it's just a comment on my part that when we look at the numbers here, either for or against, that can provide a slightly, well, unbalanced is the right word, but I think you know what I'm trying to say. We haven't, there has been very little, there have only been, I think, at the most, one objection to any of the proposals here. So obviously, there's not, there's not a lot of controversy necessarily other than possibly the Courtney Place one. But, okay, that's it for me. Anyone else, any councillor Matthews?
Just very briefly, that there's a lot of, I'm getting more and more communication from especially the kind of the bit of my ward, Northland, Wadestown, you know, raring to go with residence parking, you know, and lots of issues in those kind of suburbs with the very narrow, windy streets. I'm sure, and councillor Wolf, you're seeing the same. So, yeah, we're keen as beans.
Kia ora, just very quickly, just to say thanks councillor Spira, I think you're right. Like anything with traffic resolutions, our consultation is not a referendum and we need to look beyond just the headline yes, no numbers and read the comments from people and those sorts of things to make our decisions, just like we do with any consultation, where we need to make sure that we understand the underlying bits as well. I agree with you. Although I have to admit, I do have a soft spot in my heart for people who come and comment on every single traffic resolution. Because I acknowledge that they may not have as much skin in the game as a resident who's right there, but at the same time, it is a really, really important part of our, you know, local democracy and how important a lot of these traffic resolutions are from a safety point of view. So, yes, thank you, everyone, let's vote.
Okay, that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. We do have, thank you very much, officers for all your work on these. Once I find my notes, we have a forward program. Yeah, right, okay. For the first time, this is part of our new Look Committee, we have a forward program. And we can direct any questions here to officer Johnson. Sounds like he's part of the California Highway Patrol or something. Right, on our agenda, it does set out items on the forward program and there, no, I can't find papers everywhere, but I think it's all pretty straightforward. Here we go. The, there'll be a name for a private right of way in Kandala. Other than that, nothing out of the ordinary. Do we have any questions for officer Johnson? Right, councillor O'Neill?
I just have one quick question. So the recommendation is to receive the information. I was wondering if for other committees as well, councillors might see this as an opportunity to put stuff on the forward work program. What's within the scope of accepting the forward work program report at the end of a meeting? Given it's a new process?
So my understanding is that the forward program, yeah, would be a chance to look forward and potentially discuss items that could go onto the forward work program. Obviously, any that would come via amendment, any amendment has to be accepted by the chair. And we would expect discussions with staff over to the feasibility of that work and how that might happen in the timeframes and such.
Oh, cool. So even if the forward work program in the future might look at things beyond September and August in the next two meetings and stuff like that?
Yeah, it will be slightly different for every meeting. For this committee, in consultation with the chair, we decided that a two monthly forward program was appropriate. Regs matters are often operational things that come up as time goes on. And so looking any further, it wouldn't be of too much value in this particular case.
Yeah, cool, thanks.
Okay, there being no further questions, I move the motion, being the recommendations in the office's report, simply that we receive the information. Second to please, councillor Wolf, thank you. Any debate? councillor Matthews?
I'm very tempted to ask Shaun for a detailed summary of the traffic resolutions coming up, but I won't. Just wanted to thank you, thank you for your work and it's really good to see this in action. So thank you.
Okay, right, well, I put the motion which has been moved and seconded, please vote. Right. Thank you, that is carried unanimously. So at this point, I, we're going to stand and say the closing carick here. I declare the meeting closed at 10.09.